Good evening, welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. We have minutes from our last meeting, can I have a motion to accept those?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda for tonight's meeting is up here and also out next to the door if you'd like an agenda. And I'm going to ask everybody to either, to silence your cellphones so they don't ring during the meeting, please. I'm going to introduce the members of the board. To my right, Bob Signetti, John Bowner, Ken Scholes, who's our clerk tonight, I'm Becca Kilborn, Jeff Sauer, Ken Jervenin, and Corinne Doherty. And from the code administration department, Rich Maloney, our building inspector, and Kathy Artenbaugh, our secretary. We will read the case, and then we will ask the applicant to come up and present their information to us. And if you'd come up to this microphone to present everything. And then we'll go to the board and ask questions of the applicant. After the board asks their questions, we'll go to the audience in case there's anyone, neighbors here, or anyone else who'd like to comment on the case. And then we'll go back to the board for deliberations. And based on the discussion of the deliberations, I will tell you what your options are for moving forward. I think that's it. So, we'll read the first case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first case is Staples, Daniel Candy-Sill Liberty LLC, docket number 19-4833, requesting a variance to add a third wall sign in accordance with section 37.5, .6, .1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 230 Independence Way.
Would you introduce yourself?
Jeremy Wakehart-Hartman.
Okay. So, we've just been made aware that this was advertised at the wrong address. Apparently, the addresses have changed for Staples. So, I'm going to ask the building inspector to just explain what he knows about this, and then you're going to have to re-advertise. So, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, we did the research on this, helped them out, and we filled the original building permit and the original zoning decision, and back, that was 20 years ago. It was two, everything was 230 at that end.
Yeah.
And since in that 20 years, there's been a bunch of addresses cut up and changed. And now Staples is actually sitting on 250 Independence Way. We didn't realize that until today.
Okay.
So, it's really advertised law.
Okay.
So, we'll order that. And the board can waive the fee, and we just have to get to the advertising.
Okay. So, we can waive the fee. The other thing is, when you come back, would you bring someone from Staples, the manager of the store, or someone from Staples? Because we'll have...
Oh, you are.
Oh, you are from Staples?
Yes.
Okay. Would you just come up and introduce yourself? Thank you. You heard what we just said?
I heard part, and I apologize for running late.
That's okay.
My name is Robert Herman, I'm the senior project manager for Staples.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, I'll repeat it. We, I just wrote some memos up to the ZBA, you know, guiding on if they grant relief out of words to decisions. And I, because I worked with you, we did the research on the original variance in the sign from 20 years ago. I think whoever I was working with, but...
Yeah.
Everything at that end, everything at that end of the mall was 230 Independence Way.
Yeah.
And since then, it's been broken up into five properties.
Yes.
Best Buy is actually 230 Independence Way.
Okay.
Staples is 250, and it has a different map and lot number.
Okay.
So, we just discovered this flaw today. I apologize. Again, all the documents that we forwarded to them said 230.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it came to light today, I wish we knew earlier. So, we do have to advertise it. The ZBA can waive the fee, our fee, and we would just have to just re-advertise it, and you guys could...
And can you give us some dates when they can, if it's re-advertised, when they could come, what's the deadline?
Can they hit the 23rd?
Yeah, they can hit on...
No.
That would be October 7th.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we continue this case to October 7th.
And waive the fee?
And waive the fee.
I second it.
Does it have to be notified?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll let them, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just redo the ads, and then just, you're going to have the bill from the Davis Herald. They'll take it back.
Yeah.
Herald citizen.
Yeah. So, do you have the dates and everything that you need?
October 7th, correct.
Yeah, so she'll just redo the ad with the correct map and lot, the correct address.
So, I don't need to do anything for the application?
No, everything stays the same, it's just we've got to get that correct.
Okay, sorry. All right, thank you.
All right, we will continue. This is a continued case. Robert Ringoff, docket number 19-4827, requesting a dimensional variance from side and rear setbacks for an addition in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 56 Wenham Street.
Is anyone here for 56 Wenham Street?
I was prepared for the last meeting.
We'll table it to the end of the meeting, and maybe they'll show up. Okay, we're going to go to the top of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Timothy J. Chopelis, docket number 19-4829, requesting a variance for front setback relief from 30 feet to 22 feet in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 18 Colby Road.
Hi. And would you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Tim Chopelis. We are looking to do an addition on our home.
Okay.
And actually, when we first had the architect draw up a design, we were unaware we were going past the setbacks, because I think I measured from the curve on the street, not realizing the property line.
Yeah.
But in any case, what we're looking to do is make our one car garage a two car garage, and a second floor behind it. And in order to do all that, we need a little more space on the stairwell and whatnot, and push it forward to 22 feet from the property line, as close to the requirements.
Okay, all right. Most of us probably went out and took a look at it, so anything else you want to tell us?
No, I'm, we're kind of constricted with the dimensions of the plot, and...
These lots are all undersized, yeah.
Yeah, it would be kind of hard to keep our garage any other way.
We know that, yeah. Okay. All right, Bob, I'll start with you.
I took a ride out there yesterday. Is it 30 feet now? I mean, just eyeballing it, it doesn't look like it's even 30 feet now.
Oh.
Have you measured it?
I, I'm just going by what the land surveyor said.
You had it surveyed?
Oh, well, we had a survey, well, it's funny, because I was just looking at the previous survey, we did an addition in 2012.
You're just doing the plot plan.
And I looked at the survey from then, and he didn't show the dimension between the front of the house to the property line. There's no marking on it, I don't know why.
Okay.
But on this one, he put the 22 feet, so I'm not sure.
No, I mean from right now.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not exactly 100% sure, he doesn't say...
It is 30?
Yep.
This is an ass build that we have in our files.
All right, that's, that's all I wanted, because, you know, I'm looking, you know, of course I'm wearing glasses, and I think, Jesus, I don't even know if the guys get 30 feet. I don't have any other questions.
Can I?
So, this, could you tell me, just confirm the size of the garage?
The size of the garage.
Size of the garage.
Is it not on there? Well, it says 22 by 28 feet.
Okay.
On the plot plan.
I can't tell if that's an eight or a zero, so...
It is an eight.
Okay.
I was going by...
So, it's 28 feet across, and you're going to have two garage doors.
It is dimensioned on the foundation part. It's a little clearer.
Did you get a copy of the first block plan?
I got whatever you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe I have them.
So, this shows in the front 28 feet.
Yeah, 28. I have no further questions, thanks.
I have no questions, thank you.
Jeff?
I have no questions.
Ben?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, back to the board.
As someone who lived in a Woodvale house, I sympathize with you. I will vote for this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is a minimal encroachment, and I think it's pretty much in keeping with the neighborhood, so I would vote for this.
I would vote for this as well.
I will vote for this as well.
I would vote for this too.
I would vote for this as well.
And Beyonce, so, all right, can I have a motion?
I move to grant the variance from front setbacks of 30 feet to 22 feet in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw. The hardship is the shape of the lot and the existing placement of the house on the lot.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Maloney?
The building inspector's going to come around the hallway.
Are you ready?
Rip it.
We are ready.
Our next case, Amanda P. Baradino, docket 19-4830, requesting a variance to remove a concrete porch and rebuild new deck. Current structure is nine foot two inches, proposed will be four feet three inches from the property line in accordance with section 3.11 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 5 Brad Street Avenue.
Is there anyone here?
My name is Steve Baradino, I'm Amanda's dad, I'm representing Amanda.
Okay.
Okay, so Amanda just bought this home at 5 Brad Street Avenue. And from the photos that I provided you guys, you can see the condition of her back deck.
Yeah.
It needs to go soon. Now, this, I'm sure you guys visited this neighborhood.
Yeah.
There are three particular houses right in a row that the lot size is only 50 feet wide. So, she's really constricted on the side lots. The house to the right of her, the foundation of that house is built two and a half feet from her lot line. And the house to the left of her, with the director Butter, is built six feet from her lot line.
Okay.
Years ago, that a Butter that, you know, was closest to her deck, got a variance, or they, they got a variance, a two-foot easement, to get their car down the driveway, to type what their lot was. So, she gave up, or the property owner before her, gave up two feet of her land on this side that we're talking about, so that that person could get a driveway down beside their house. I provided you with pictures of the proposed deck and all that, I don't know if that means that. But, so, her house is in a non-informative kind of neighborhood, and there's really not too much room to move. So, I provided you with a statement from the abutting neighbor at 7 Brad Street Avenue, who was in favor of us, or in favor of Amanda, getting this variance, as he's probably tired of looking at that. I mean, she has a garage built at the end of her driveway, that kind of, there's an extension or addition on the garage before she bought it, that kind of pushes into her backyard. So, making the deck deeper is pretty tough, because she needs access to her backyard. So, she's looking for a few feet on the left-hand side, and still leaving four to five feet of grass area between her and her neighbor. The deck that's proposed will only be two and a half feet to three feet in height, with maybe like a five, twelve little privacy, giving her neighbor's privacy, and also herself. Those photos aren't really the scale. Rich just told me to do something nice.
This, you mean this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Well, that's it.
So, can you just repeat for Rich, because he's back here, what you said about, which he probably knows, but the driveway next to it, the how many feet?
Oh, the...
The house to the left.
The one to the left?
Yes.
Well, the left applied for a variance for an easement years ago, to take two feet away from Amanda's property, so that they could fit a car down the...
We don't, we don't give easements, the property owner gives easements.
It's just, it's an easement.
Oh, yeah, well, they, I'm sure the property...
So, the next-door neighbor has an easement on their property?
On your...
It is in place.
Yes.
Yep.
Is it on the deed?
Just so it's clear, this board doesn't give easements.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the property owner had to give the easement.
Let you look.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, Corinne, can I start with you?
I see where the easement is on the property. Is having the deck come out as far as it is, like, to the property line, and also to where the easement starts?
It is.
Is that enough of a buffer?
That's five feet. Right now, it would be, right now, there, if you see on one of the pitches, the side view, this one right here, this one right here, someone looking from the screen, not that.
This one?
Yes. So, this is the existing deck right here.
Mm-hmm.
So, she's actually just looking to come out to almost the end of this plant right here.
Okay.
So, we're trying to leave a grass strip here, to keep it open to the neighbors.
Okay.
And she's not interested in putting a fence along her property line, because she likes her neighbors, she's just looking for a little wider deck.
Well, because of the easement, you wouldn't be able to put the fence on the line anyway. And this is the privacy fence that you're going to put up? Or the privacy wall?
It's going to be smaller, yeah.
Okay.
It's not going to be something crazy, it's kind of the same size as what's there now, it's just nicer, and you can put more privacy.
Okay, okay, I don't, those are my only questions.
Yeah, so this is an existing non-performance, because it's supposed to be 15 feet?
Correct.
All right. And then you have the, you have two further, all right. Well, I guess that there's not much you can do there, I mean, except for, you know, you want to come out a little, and you're going to have it fenced in, so. I have no other questions.
Okay, Jeff?
So, this picture that we're looking at, this edge of the neighbor's driveway, is that about where the edge of the easement is right now?
That is the easement.
So, so actually, your property actually goes two feet into that driveway?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's actually, we have a size of the garage, you see the shed is...
Yeah, right along the edge of that garage, yeah. Okay, all right, I have no other questions, thank you.
I have no questions, I understand what you're doing.
Jeff?
Well, the hostas look good.
[laughing].
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions, I can see why you want to reclose it.
Bob?
I'm surprised you actually have a lot this size. If I recall, originally down there, they were all 5,000 square foot lots.
I think the three, yeah, I think the three lots were one at some point, that's the neighbor.
And somebody broke it up?
And they broke it into three, yeah.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So, my only question is, did you consider going back further instead of to the left?
Well, we're trying to go back, the problem is, if you look at that lot line, where the garage is...
Yeah.
It's, if you go back too much, it's kind of interfering with, you know, the walkway that's here going into the backyard, so this actually probably has to be sharpened up a bit. You know, we proposed it being 20 feet deep, but we're not going to be able to do that. We want to be able to get some equipment back there, in case we have...
Otherwise, there's no way to get to the backyard.
You pitched at that corner.
The lamark is so...
So, you're saying that even though this says 18 by 20, it probably won't?
Well, we're looking really for the width, the depth, we weren't really sure on how deep we could go back.
Oh, okay.
But after having people look at it, they said you don't want to cut, you're cutting the backyard off.
There's no way to get there?
Right.
Yeah, in there?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Do, if he builds it smaller, do you care?
No, I just put a limit, we should have a maximum...
Not more than?
Not more than 20 feet deep.
Okay, then 20 feet, okay. All right. And are there any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, and we don't have any letters or anything from any Butters.
That's one.
Oh, no more than, yeah.
Do you want to read that in? Got it? That's a nice-looking house, 7, yeah?
We're in receipt of our, letter in the package. Hi, Steve, this is for the Town of Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. To whom it may concern, I am in full support of the variance in question from Amanda Baradino at 5 Brad Street Avenue for a new back deck renovation sincerely, Stephen Cathy Millen, 7 Brad Street Avenue.
All right. Corinne, I guess back to you.
I would vote for this.
I would vote for this too.
I would vote for this.
Okay.
I would vote for this, I know I wouldn't want to have a barbecue on that deck right there.
I am too, I'm in favor.
Okay.
I will vote for this.
Okay, and I'll vote for this. We just need a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we grant the dimensional variance from side setbacks of 15 feet to 4.3, and a deck size to not exceed 20 feet in depth from the back edge of the house, as shown on the plan dated August 1st, 2018, in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws.
Do you have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Rich will meet you in the hallway, okay.
Should we do a hygienic...
Oh, Chair, I can, is it too late?
Add it.
Yeah, add the hatchet, please, sorry. I'm just reading from the cheat sheet.
Okay, moving right along, our next case, John Salvagnelli, docket number 19-4831, requesting a variance to tear down a garage and rebuild closer to the property line in accordance with section 3.17 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 22 Crane Street.
Hi, how are you?
Good, I'm John Salvagnelli.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to recuse myself from this.
Okay, all right.
I live on Lawrence Street, so...
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Well, you know the name.
Why don't we wait for Rich, all right? Thanks for the pictures.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, most of us were out there, I believe, so, but, still... All right, these tight lots, I like his opinion sometimes on them, so, go ahead. Thank you.
So, I've been in that house for like 35 years, and this garage was there when I bought the house. It's a metal steel garage, probably, I'm thinking before we were a lot too, I don't know, Lynn Garage Company stamped on the inside. It's all rusting out. It used to have two metal doors that actually opened, it's more of a shed in the garage.
Okay.
And it's actually, when they did it, they did it properly, eight feet, because the lots are only 5,000 square feet, they're only 5,500. When they originally built it, it tilted, probably to corrig it, I don't know if that was it, but eight feet from the property lines. I'd like to tear it down, and I'd like to rebuild and make it big enough so that my wife can actually park a car in the front house.
Okay.
And so, the new garage will be, as you see in the plan, it'll be 14 by 22. The current garage is 11 by 19, so we're adding three feet to the side approaching the lot line, and three feet to the rear. And the garage's door now, she can't get in the garage. And if you notice, it's off-center.
Yeah.
You can't even get in there, if she backed up, she's either going to hit the house, or...
Okay.
So, that's what I plan on doing, and obviously, we're improving, if you saw the pictures, the garage is done, the rest don't find it after all these years.
Okay.
And it's a cement foundation there now, but I'm going to have to add existing, I mean, I'll have to add to the existing foundation according to what I've already said.
Okay, okay.
That's pretty much it. I have a new track that I'm going to put up here, and all that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And this, what you have, the sheds unlimited in here in the package?
Oh, yes, I, well, I haven't actually gone ahead yet, because I don't, didn't know...
Okay, but the height would be?
It's got to be just a, yeah, there's no second floor or nothing, no.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a company that, I guess it's pretty bad, it's a pretty good deal, I guess. And they, they actually ship it and then install it there. If I live closer, they can actually ship it, believe it or not, on the trailer, I'll put together, but...
Wow.
Well, it's from Pennsylvania.
Yeah. Okay.
They ship it in parts, and then they...
Unfold it.
Yeah, it's going to be wood, you know.
All right, I guess we're going to start with Bob.
Are they going to take the old one away?
No, I'm paying them, someone will do that too. They have to go through the process for that, I have to have a rack control come and make sure there's no rats.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I've already spent quite a bit of money.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to go from 8.1 to 4.7 in the rear, and five, five feet on the side, right?
Correct. I'm adding three feet to the existing foundation.
Yeah. Well, looking at the way that garage is now, and the way your driveway's lined up, I can, I can see why you want to move it over a little bit.
Well, not only that, I figured if I'm going to stay down on the old one, why not just add, I'm only adding three feet.
Yeah.
And then, actually, I'm not even really moving the garage. When I have the door built, I'm going to have it off-center, you can do that on a garage.
Mm.
Yeah, that's what I'm planning on doing, the garage, the door is going to be offset to the right a little bit, there'll be more of a knee wall on the left side than on the right side.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's the only way, I figured that was the best use of the small land that I have.
I have no questions.
That's a tight spot.
Yeah. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Salvagnelli, I noticed in the packet it says eight-inch overhang.
Yeah.
Is that not part of the 14 feet across?
Uh, I don't...
I'm guessing no.
Probably not, I would think not.
Well, we count the overhang as part of the building, so you're actually adding another 16 inches, right?
When they said the overhang was eight inches?
Eight inches.
Yeah.
So, that actually makes the width 15 feet four inches, so that's actually going to cut into that five and more, right?
Eight inches more.
Eight inches into the five.
Eight inches on the right.
Yeah, only on that side, right, so another foot, so you're really looking for a setback of...
Four something.
Four something, all right.
Yeah.
So, just a clarification there.
Right.
So, it's actually going to be four foot four inches, if I have my mouth right, that's the setback.
Well, it's eight foot one, so four, four foot five.
Oh, he's, said he was going down to five, right? Anyway, okay.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Yep.
It's like, yeah, of course, if you add gutters, that would even be more.
I don't think you count the gutters, yeah?
No, the gutters don't.
Yeah, they don't, it would be more?
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be adding the gutters.
I have no further questions.
We'll let Rich figure it out, and then...
This is Kelly, whatever.
It's got him mine.
This awning and stuff, that's all, this awning and everything, that's all going to be out of there?
Yeah, that's, that's where I was putting stuff now, because I had no room in the garage.
All right, I have no further questions.
Okay.
That's actually coming with a bump, I'm worried, well, the new garage is going to go there, or not quite, might as well.
Pause, yeah.
It would be four, the relief would be 4.4.
4.4, that's what I said.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, this, this picture you provided of the house with the fence on the right, that's pretty much your property line, that fence?
That fence, yeah, well, it might go a little bit farther, I don't, I don't...
It's, I mean, it's inside your...
Yeah, I had a, I had a survey.
We have surveys?
Yeah, yeah, I saw the plot.
But actually, the garage behind it, I took that picture because that's...
That's the, he's on the line.
My neighborhood, believe me, I'm the...
Everybody's on the line.
Everybody's on the line in that neighborhood, yeah.
Everybody is.
I have no further questions.
Not that it matters, but...
Okay.
I have no questions.
Corinne?
I have no questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions, long... I don't have any questions as long as we have the right dimensions. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, back to the board.
I'd vote for this.
Yeah, I too would vote for this. It's insignificant.
I have no problem with this. I would vote for this.
I will vote for this.
I will vote for this.
And I'll vote for this. Is there anything from the building inspector that we need to know regarding to this?
High neighborhood, I have family and friends down there and most of the garages are right on the property line, both back and.
So four point four is good then.
They're all five thousand square foot lots if you look at it in the assessment map.
Like, can't even fit a garage in a house on the same lot, you know? Yeah, yeah, and have any kind of yard, so.
I still love the neighborhood though.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to grant the variance to rebuild this garage with a rear setback of four point seven feet and a side setback on the right side of four point four feet in accordance with section seven, table two of the Danza zoning bylaws. The hardship being the placement of the structure on the land. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. The literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or the purpose of the zoning bylaws.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
What, isn't he reading? Just read what's on there.
Yes.
Well, he said he wanted this last time. So, that's what he just asked me for. On the Five Brad Street, we didn't read the, any one of it. Okay, right, I didn't see this on the.
Our next case, William Moody, docket number nineteen dash four eight three two, requesting a variance for a garage. Proposed setbacks, side and rear to be five feet in accordance with table two, section seven of the Danza zoning bylaws at Thirty Nine Pine Street.
It's garage night.
Yeah, it's garage night.
Hi.
William Moody, I pronounce it Cameron.
I'm going to ask you to wait for Rich, just in case there's any questions about the lot line. We can read in, I guess, the neighbors.
Do you want to read that now? Thank you, Madam Chair. Dear Ms. Ashenball, I am writing to you about the subject application that requests a five-foot rear setback variance from our property at Forty One Pine Street to construct a new garage. We believe a structure five feet from our property is too close, but would agree to an eight-foot variance to build the proposed garage under the following conditions. No windows, one, no windows be placed at the rear dormer facing our property. We would like this documented by the town as part of the variance if one is approved. Two, the structure aligns with the edge or end of our garage closest to the house. And three, we manage any trimmings of trees located on our property. The zoning board is scheduled to review application on September ninth and I plan on attending the meeting. Thank you for consideration, Kathy Sturchel. Excuse me if I butchered that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, go ahead.
Darren and I have lived at Thirty Nine Pine Street for the last nine years and the two main reasons why we picked the location for the proposed garage were really to keep the integrity of the corner lot, puts us on the main street. And second is to give the neighbors as much privacy as possible because if I put the garage in a different location, it would block the people behind the Chases' house. It would block a view of their, of their view across all the way to Pine Street. And also, the topography of the land drops drastically from my driveway, around a six-foot drop. And I have an above-ground swimming pool in that location. That's, that really wouldn't work in that spot, so. Let's discuss both the, with both the butters, the project at length, the Sturchel locate and the letter that you've read on the Chases' supposedly. And the other reason why I picked the garage in that location is we take care of her mom. She has Parkinson's and the garage being close to the house would help out instead of being in a different location in the yard.
Can you discuss the size of the garage and what the, what it's going to look like?
Sure. The garage is going to be, I'm looking to have a twenty-eight feet deep by thirty-two feet wide.
Okay.
It's a, it would have an oversized two-car garage. And then the, the garage, as I gave you, twenty-three feet in elevation. The side view picture would be the, the side that would face the Chases' house and there would be no window there because that overlooks their, their swimming pool. They have a built-in swimming pool, so there'd be no windows on that side of the garage at all, except on the lower half, which there's a six-foot stockade fence. And then the dormer on the end, what the Sturchels were requesting was, I'm just going to eliminate the dormer altogether. I know they were saying no windows, but there's a tree line there. There's three or four trees that, up against the back of the property and a butts their garage. So I'm just going to do, if it gets approved, I'm just going to do away with the dormer altogether. We just make it a roof line, that's it.
Anything else?
I'm just trying to keep the garage, and the garage will be in the, in the same form of the houses. I'm trying to keep everything uniform, look the same as the house so it can stand out a little.
Okay. It's a big garage. Yeah.
It's a big garage.
Okay, let's start with Corinne, if you have any questions.
The Sturchels' property goes from one end to the other? Maybe you can show me?
Sure.
From the back?
Yes, the Sturchels goes from Pine Street, which is here, all the way across.
Okay, all the way across, all the way down to the end?
All the way to the back, yeah, this is Pine, so all the way to the back.
Okay.
So it's this whole area here.
And which one is the, the Chases? I don't see their name referenced on here.
Yeah, this lot used to be owned by the, the Melansons. It was one whole lot before.
Okay.
And this is the property line here that cuts across.
Okay.
So it's Lot A, Lot B. We own Lot A.
Okay.
So the, their house actually sits on Whipple Street.
Okay.
And the front of their house is on Whipple Street.
Okay.
And they have a side yard here, so they have a built-in swimming pool here. And then that, this is just kind of a woodsy area.
Okay.
So this is why I placed the garage here, instead of putting the garage here, because they can, they have a view of Pine Street all the way across both the yards.
Okay.
And I just didn't want to impede on that.
Okay.
And like I, like I showed with the arrows, the, from the driveway coming up off of Pine, the, the land drops off like six feet from my driveway. So it would be a huge undertaking to, to even put a garage in that location.
You'd have to build it up, yeah.
I'd have to build the whole thing up and it would be more of a hindrance to them if it had to come up even more because it drops off so much and it would be as high as their fence. They have a six-foot stockade fence that runs along the property line.
Okay. All right, and here's your driveway, so you would come in and go?
Yes.
Okay, no other questions?
What is the setback right now from the existing structure, the existing garage?
There is no garage there.
So what, what is that? There looks like you have something drawn there. It's, that's just the end of the driveway? So right here? I mean, do you, see this little box you get right here? This right here? I was wondering if that was the structure.
Oh, no, that's, don't.
So this is just the end of?
There's nothing. It's just open, this is my driveway here. This is where I park my cars now.
Okay, all right, so there's nothing there right now?
Yeah, the only thing that, that, there was, I drew a box in there.
Yeah.
That's their three-car garage on the, the Sturchels' property.
Okay.
That's how they get into their garage. So the two garages would be back to back.
Uh-huh, and this is going to be, this is the seven, where's the five?
The seven feet would be from the Chases' property on the pool side.
And this would be five?
And then the Sturchels are asking, which is fine with me with the eight feet. I'd ask for five, but.
Yeah. That's all I get. The existing two-story barn on the other property, they access that through your driveway? Or is it a shared driveway?
No, the barn doesn't exist anymore.
The barn's turned into.
This is an old plan, twenty-ten.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the A and R when all this land belonged to this lot here.
Oh, okay.
And they cut it off. The pool and the barn went with the new lot and they actually converted the barn to a house. But that's, that's why, this is actually NAS built, so it's very accurate drawing of what's on the ground.
Okay.
Yeah, the barn, they actually moved to the front or the, the side of the, the new house.
They, they went, they, they, they built to the right. The barn is part of the house now and they built towards the right.
Okay. Okay.
Very nice. Very nice of them.
Okay, so there is no shared driveway between the two?
There is not, no, the property line is, it cuts off, that my driveway ends at the fence.
Okay, that's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
In your package, I see a picture of the front of the garage, proposed garage, a picture of the side, this is the Chase side, right? Chase property is going to be facing their pool. Where is the picture of the back facing the Sturchels? I don't see anything for that, with that picture of that.
I don't, I don't have one. It would be the same as the, it was, it was basically going to be the same as the front.
Well, that has the garage doors on it.
Yeah, just the top. There was going to be dormer top on both sides of the roof line.
And those are all windows up top there?
Those are windows that would look over my property, the front.
They specifically said they wanted no windows.
No, the back, the back is going to be eliminated, the dormer altogether. It's just going to be roof line.
So this dormer.
The left side.
Oh, this is the back?
What about the front dormer?
That would go away.
And the front dormer staying?
Yes, that would look over my property.
Which would be here.
In front of that, correct.
Would you take that as a condition, to take that back dormer off?
That, yeah, yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Why, why so big a structure?
Well, the house is old. We have some storage in the basement. The basement is very wet. So I'm looking to, for the upper part to be actual storage. Everything that's down in my basement, the house was built in eighteen ninety-eight, it's all wet. It's moisture, it ruins everything that's down there, so.
Two or three color garage.
It doesn't stay dry.
It just seems like if it wasn't so wide, it could satisfy the setback, if it wasn't thirty-two feet. If it was more like twenty-eight by twenty-eight or something. I guess I have no other questions.
This is actually a three, three-car garage, right? Looking at the doors.
It's a twelve and a nine, so it's just an oversized two. I mean, I know the footage is thirty-two, but I don't think it could still fit.
It's a three to me.
Yeah, it's a three-car garage, which is, is legal, but I, I just, let's, you know, lay everything out on the table there.
I understand.
And you're going to use the upper floor for storage, is that correct? When I was out there, you do have a, I don't know what you call it, a temporary garage or something on that spot right now.
I have a canopy to protect my sports car, yes, I have a sports car.
Yeah, all right, what do you ask you? If you had anything on there? You said you had nothing on there.
Oh, no, the, the little square that was drawn, that's not that, that's not that structure.
Because you do have a structure there now.
Yes, it's just a, it's a canvas structure there.
Yeah, okay. I kind of agree with, with John here. I think it's a little too big. You know, you're jamming it into that, that little space. I see how you come in the driveway and go around to the left, and I, I could see that. I don't have any other questions.
I have one other question.
Go right ahead.
You were saying that you're going to move the structure so that it's eight feet instead of five feet. Does that mean you're going to take away three feet, or does that mean you're going to move it three feet over?
I'm just moving it forward.
Okay.
Onto my, further, further in the driveway.
Okay.
Okay, so when I was out there and I met with you, I, I told you that I'd like to see a legal plot plan. I would talk to the building inspector and see whether you think that we need one, but typically for something being constructed, I like to see this is hand drawn.
This is the, this is the, this is the, this is the A and I record. This is a beautiful drawing. It's all certified.
Okay, but you're going to be able to know where the lot line is to, for the measurements?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
This, this is a great document.
Okay, all right, okay, well, if you're comfortable with it. It, it seems to me like it's such a big structure and you have so much land coming into the right of the driveway that you could meet all the setbacks and still have room to put this up. I mean, it, it's a lot of building to tuck in that little corner.
I agree, but again, we bought, we purchased the land from the corner lot and to put a structure there, it just seems like it would ruin the whole lot itself and it still impedes with the neighbors to.
Well, it would give you more, more privacy for your pool. I mean, right now, your pool is open to two streets of people.
It doesn't really because Whipple Street's all wide open too, you know, so there's really no privacy to our pool.
That's what I'm saying. If you put a structure.
The pool, the privacy is the, the three trees that sit on the corner lot. That's the only thing that really keeps any privacy from Pine Street.
Okay. So did you think about trying to make the structure small enough to conform with the legal setbacks?
With the fifteen feet?
Yeah.
No, it won't fit.
It won't fit?
These are two.
Okay, all right, I'm going to.
Let me ask another question.
Yeah.
Is this your pool or the other people's pool that I'm looking at here on this map?
Which one, the built-in pool?
The one that's shown here on the map.
The circle is his. The circle is his.
He's got a pool here.
Chase.
That's the above.
That's yours, the above ground.
The built-in pool is the Chase.
Oh, all right. I, I didn't see that circle one. So that's where you want the setback from roughly the line where the pool is?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's where he wants the twenty-eight, I guess, thirty-two.
So what is, just one more question from me. How tall is the second floor of this building once you're inside of it?
Complete height is twenty-three feet.
The height of the instruct, of the complete structure?
Twenty-three feet.
Okay, and, but when you're, the headroom within the second floor is?
It's not going to be a lot, that's what it's storage, maybe seven feet.
Seven feet? So the first floor is?
The garage ceiling would be nine feet.
The first floor is nine feet and the entire structure is twenty-three feet, so in the middle.
Right, the beams are eighteen inches deep to support the hole because there'll be no columns in the garage. So you, I'm losing a foot and a half to just support the upper floor.
Okay.
And it's at a twelve-foot roof, so clearly a lot of the, a lot of the, the upper part becomes dead space because it's, it's so short because of the roof line.
Okay.
Quick question. You, you've got an eve on the back?
An eve on the back.
Of the roof? It's a roof overhang?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So you're measuring that too as part of your distance?
No, I did not.
Yeah, so now it's even closer. So we, we go to, from the furthest point, which is that eve?
Do you know how, why the eve is?
The eve, I'm not exactly sure. I think it's a foot on the right-hand side, so that would affect the Chases' side. I think it's a foot on the right-hand side, so that would affect the Chases' side.
So you're really looking at 30 feet.
Okay. All right, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Mr. Duggan, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. So remind me again, the square footage, the footprint of this structure, please?
I think we got it.
It's...
32 by 28.
32 by 28. That's 600.
And this is a concrete pad? Or is it a, have a cellar?
No cellar.
Slab. All right, well, we talked about the 15-foot setbacks. The size of the structure, I think if you moved it, I think you, I think you shouldn't give the variance for the side setback, but move the structure over towards the, where that embankment is.
Forward, essentially?
Well, there's a, there's a built-in pool there, right? So move it over. I think to go less than five feet for a setback for this is a little bit over for R2. I mean, I know the board tends to favor cutting the setback in half, so this is way beyond that. I think it's just, I think it's out of character for the neighborhood building.
Yeah.
And I understand what the applicant is trying to do, but I think it's a little bit much. I think if it was toned down a little bit, probably be more acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Rich Sturtschel, live at 41 Pine Street.
Okay.
One of the abutters, and we know the family.
Where are you on here?
41 Pine Street. We're the back.
Okay.
The back of his garage would face the back of our garage.
Who wrote the letter?
My wife wrote the letter.
With your wife?
Yeah. Right, it's nice, doesn't she? As laid out in the letter and with the design, we have no issue. All right? I know the board will vote based on distances, but having been owning that house since 1997 and living, going there since 1982 with my father-in-law, we bought my house with my father-in-law, I can see why it has to be the location is. There is a slope down there, it would be quite a lot of engineering work to make it level. Also, the way it's faced, we have no issue with facing our garage. The structure is a nice structure. They've done nothing but enhance the property to make the neighborhood and the property look good. I've been there since the previous person, it's very nice. It wasn't a great structure, even when it has built properties. They're trying to make the area look good. It's not impeding on us living there or doing anything. The eight-foot, why? Because our garage right now, from the fence, is about eight foot, just to keep a common kind of distance there.
So you have eight feet, and they would have eight feet, so there'd be 16 feet between the two structures?
Yeah. And our house was built 1927, so it goes way back, you know, in days, so. And the size of the garage, I'm saying it's oversized, well, you know, besides having this car, they do also have trucks and family there. They have a child who's probably going to get his license pretty soon, so that's another car, plus having things like the snow blower and such that they use and be able to store. They've talked, we have no issue with that, because it's been a plus with the neighborhood, and the utility that they get out of the garage. It's not like that area, if you've been down to it, there's only the three of us in that corner. It's not impeding other persons' view or activity coming out of the house or access to the driveway. So we're fine with them being, if you decide to approve it as is. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask us.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. All right. Any other questions from the board for deliberations? Okay.
If you agreed to move the three feet and also eliminate the windows in the back, I would vote for that.
Did the eight feet off?
Yeah. And I believe you said that you are, so, yeah.
Yes, yes.
But we would make that a condition.
No dormer, no window on that.
Right, correct.
That's from the eve now. It's from the overhang of the roof.
I too agree, as per the letter here. Eight-foot side setback or rear setback, whatever you're saying, from the eve, and then with the non-windows, like Corinne.
I think the structure's too big, too wide, the 32-foot dimension. I don't think I would vote for this so close to the side setback line.
Okay. And the side setback is...
Call that the rear.
The rear? Okay, yeah, from the street.
His property would be side, yeah.
Seven side, five rear.
The setback to the pool.
All right. Is, how many feet?
It's five.
He's posing, five? Okay. And that's not with the overhang, right?
Well, there would be no overhang on that side. The overhang's front of the back.
There's no overhanging on the side, right? Okay.
It should be seven.
It should be seven?
Seven on the plot line.
It's seven.
It's written in red.
It says five, and then it says seven?
Five from the rear, it says.
This is the rear. Coming from the street. And now he's changing it from five to eight in the rear.
Which one we call in the rear?
So he's got seven on the side.
The one that faces the Sturtschels is, is the side.
Is the side.
Is the side, yes.
That's seven.
But it's the rear of the building.
It is the building.
It's the rear of the building.
It's the front door. I look at the front door from the screen.
Yep.
Left side.
Is the side.
Is the side.
And you have the rear.
Right.
So it's the rear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I was just going on the way.
All right, so... So let's clarify. Can we clarify, what is the rear setback currently you're asking for?
Seven.
He's asking for seven.
Yeah, the plan...
And the side would be eight.
From the building to the line where the pool is, seven.
Yep, it's seven feet.
And from the building to the Sturtschels is going to be eight, from the eve to the line.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I know we're deliberating, but that poses another question for me. At seven feet setback and eight feet setback, does this now 30 by 32 structure fit there? Because I don't see how it does.
It fits to scale on the drawing.
It's 28 by 32.
No, it's 30 with the overhangs. Foot on each side.
Well, the, the, the overhangs on the front...
So they'll push it forward, I get that.
They're not sockets, they're rakes. They can be trimmed down to, you know, we can get a rake from the foundation, project about three and a half inches.
Okay.
This is 32 wide without the overhangs?
Right, you're talking about, on a standard rake detail, you're talking about total, one side to the other, seven inches.
Okay.
So it'll be 32 feet, seven inches approximately.
Okay. 32 seven.
This way.
32 seven, yes.
Here is how much?
By 28, seven.
I'm just saying, he shows it blocked out, but typically the rake detail on the end is pretty small.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is it me now?
Yes.
No, yeah, it's you.
It is Ken.
Okay, I'll go with the seven and eight setbacks and the no dormer on the back. We haven't heard from the Chases via letter, or they're not here, so they're not in our position. So I would vote for it with those conditions.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Jeff. I think, I think it's too big at 900 square feet. I mean, we don't even, F. lives a 700, you know, in-law apartment, so 750 square feet, so, you know, this is bigger than that. I want to see you get this, but I think it's too big. I would like to see you downsize it a little bit. I'm okay with the setbacks and the other conditions that were added, but I would not vote for it as presented.
Okay. Bob?
I agree with John, I think it's too big. It's a, it's a three-car garage. Maybe if you made it a two-car garage, it would fit in nicely, you'd have a little room on the side, and I won't vote for it as is.
Okay.
As presented.
Okay, so you don't have enough votes to get this approved tonight? Corinne and Ken are alternates. You need three of five votes, or is there variance?
There's variance, huh?
There's variance.
You need four votes, four of the five votes? So you can continue it to the next meeting and think about the size of the structure and maybe what you want to do. I don't know if anyone wants to offer any comments with regard to what you might want to approve?
I just think something slightly smaller.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be, you know, I know what you're trying to do, and I understand your storage needs, it's just, it's just too big.
If, if you could make that 12-foot door a 10-foot door, would you be able to get the vehicle in that you're planning on putting in there?
Oh, yeah, yes. Just, just...
I would vote for it if it was two feet, you know, if it was a 30-foot building instead of a 32, and give you that extra foot, you know, over on the...
Work the numbers a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd agree with that. Work the numbers, just shrink it down a little bit, and I'd go for it.
Okay.
It's just so tight, that, that, that sock, that rear setback.
Yeah, okay. So our, our next meeting is September 23rd, in two weeks? Okay, so would you be able to think about it by then? Okay, so...
Yeah, could I remind the applicant?
Excuse me?
Sorry, I'm just trying to help. Just trying to help.
So in order to get everything to the board before the meeting, so we can look at it and be prepared, we'd like it by Tuesday of the...
17.[1617.12]